Cooperative economics is what Representative Bruce is talking about. It's a big deal and it's just something that we don't say often, but I'm proud to say the city of South Fulton has an 89% African-American population according to the National League of Cities. We're the blackest city in America. And I think what he was just speaking of is establishing a footprint for us and by us in this city, and I think we should all embrace that concept. Not saying that we want to be divisive or exclude anyone, but we do have to start. And we don't have to look outside of our community or rush to find someone else when we can do a lot of this stuff for ourselves. So, thank you so much Representative Bruce for that. Also, I just want to add real quick because I know we got to get to this form, that 80% of our tax revenue comes from you guys. Only 20% comes from businesses outside of your houses. So, it's important that this is something that we get going and we get it going fast. I'm going to introduce to you guys our moderator for this morning. She's a District 7 resident and I'm proud of that. And her name is Amanda Cooper. She's part of the Intercom Radio Atlanta News Team. Intercom Radio Atlanta includes WEE FM, V103, 1380 WA OK News and Talk, WZGC FM 92.9 The Game, NWSTR FM Star 94.1. Currently, she is the afternoon news anchor on 1380 WA OK News and Talk. She is also affiliate traffic reporter for V103, 1380 WA OK, and 92.9 The Game, and a monthly host on Love and Relationships with Friends on 1380 WA OK News and Talk. In addition, Amanda also produces and contributes content for Intercom Radio Atlanta's other show, Atlanta Up Close, which airs weekly on 1380 WA OK, V103, and Star 94.1. I believe she is qualified to moderate this panel. So, please give a warm welcome to District 7's own Amanda Cooper.
Hello, everyone. How are you doing this afternoon?
Good.
You guys don't sound excited about this form today. Well, this is very important for all of us. Like Mayor Protim Baker said, this directly affects all of us. I'm a resident here in District 7, proud resident here in District 7 at Fulton Park. I see some of my residents, my neighbors over here. And on September 17, voters in Fulton County District 6 will head to the polls to elect a new commissioner following the death of beloved Miss Emma Darnell. The district includes Chautauqua Hills, Bearburn, Unincorporated Fulton County, Hayfield, Palmetto, and portions of Atlanta, College Park, East Point, South Fulton, and Union City. The reason why we're here today is to ask questions and to find out what our candidates, what they're thinking about and what their stances about political issues and economic issues that directly affect us. The Fulton County Commission oversees a $1.1 billion budget which funds children and family services, senior centers and services, mental health, county courts, and housing assistance, elections, libraries, arts centers, animal control, and more. So, today we're going to learn more about the following candidates running for District 6 and if elected, what they will do in office that will enhance the quality of our lives here in the city of South Fulton. So, at this time, I'd like to ask candidates to come forward, please. While we're getting ready, if you don't have one already, we do have public hearing speaker request cards. If you would like one, can someone assist me? Lady passing out to someone who might want to have a question. Thank you. And the way this is going to go, the form is going to be an hour and a half. The first hour, we will ask, that will ask prepared questions. The last thirty minutes will be your questions and give you an opportunity to maybe ask some questions that you want to know specifically about in regards to this particular election. Everybody have a card who wants one? Well, if you change your mind, Mark will put, Mark will, you've got to place your card somewhere if somebody changes their mind.
Yes.
Each speaker will have two minutes to introduce themselves. And each question, then we'll have a max time of two minutes each and I'll, and the timekeeper, so. So, let's give another round of applause to this panel of candidates. I have to stand up. I kind of introduced myself to you all, but I have to do names with faces now. So, I'm going to stand up and look here. So, here today, we have Khadijah Abdurrahman. We have Mr. Joe Karren. Warren Seke Jr., Rafer Johnson. We have the beautiful Ms. Dr. Frances Rowe. We also have Meshauna Culver-Gradford. We have Sojourner Maribel Grimmet. And, let me see here. We also have Mr. Carl Dorsey Jr. And lastly, we definitely not least, we have Org Eljourner Esquire.
Good morning.
Give another round of applause for candidates. So, we'll begin, we'll go in the order as announced. You'll have, you'll get an opportunity to introduce yourself in just two minutes, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Khadijah. First of all, giving honor to God, thanking you for allowing us to come into your community and tell you what we plan to do, or more importantly, what we need to do. I am a native of Atlanta. I am the daughter of Victoria Travis Jackson and James Jackson. I am a fierce community advocate, have been since birth. I'm here to help and work with you, not tower over you, and not be anything other than a community servant to you. And I ask that you continue to pray for all of us and pray that this campaign is one that is successful and we all come together regardless of who wins. Thank you.
Do we have more microphones?
There's a microphone.
All right, there, Mr. Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, good morning. How's that?
Good morning.
My name is Joe Karren, and I'm a candidate for the Fulton County Commission, District 6. I want to be, first of all, I'm glad to be here. I want to thank Pastor Martin for welcoming us into this beautiful, beautiful sanctuary. I am a candidate with no special interests. My only desire is to serve, and it always has been. I will continue to be what I have been, a voice for the voiceless. I have fought and worked in my community from a community activist to city council member, to vice mayor of the city of College Park, and hopefully with your support, onto county commissioner. For the past years, I've been in homeowner associations, neighborhood association meetings. I've never left my community, and I have listened closely and carefully to the needs of my community. And my goals are clear. Number one, no residential property tax increase. Number two, a multi-purpose senior center in our community. Number three, a roadside trash program to clean up some of our neighborhoods and our intersections in particular. I'm willing to work hard. I've made those hundred million dollar budgets. I have the experience to get going. I know what needs to be done, and I know how to listen. And I'm ready to serve. I'm Joe Karren, and I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Warren Head. I am a native of Atlanta, born and raised in the southwest Atlanta community. Fifty-nine years old. I'm a staunch advocate for people. I have worked in the Pittsburgh community of Atlanta, which is one of the toughest neighborhoods in the city of Atlanta for the past ten to fifteen years, advocating for the people in that community. If you know that community, you know some of the issues that have risen over the past ten or so years. When you talk about neighborhoods, you're talking about the flux within inner workings of that community. People talk about the bad things that happen, but a lot of times in the media, you don't hear about the good things that are happening. And those are the things that come with working with people, making sure that they understand that, hey, they do have a voice, that they need to be connected. And that's one of the things that I've had a fortunate opportunity to do within those communities. I am the current president of the Atlanta College Park District of United Methodist Men. I'm also the secretary for the North Georgia Conference of United Methodist Men, a ministry that works within communities where our churches are located to help foster the relationships between the people in those communities, helping to make them better. As well, I just love people. First of all, I believe that people are the main purpose for us as government. If I'm to represent you, then I need to be your voice. I need to be your advocate. I need to be the person that is making sure that the input that you give me is being heard within the confines of the communities that are being represented. That's why I want to be your representative. I believe that your voice should be heard before any decisions are made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Rafer Johnson, and I am happy to be here. Pastor Martin, Councilman Baker, thank you for this opportunity. I am fifty-three years old this year in November, and I'm offering my fifty-three years of life experience and thirty-four years of successful business, government, nonprofit, and community leadership on the ballot and asking you for your consideration for District 6 Commissioner. I have served in this community for over twenty years. I served as HOA president right off the Old National when I built my first house in 2001. And I lived there until 2012, but I moved over to the Camp Creek area. I've served as your chair and Housing Authority Chair and Commissioner. I've served as the representative from Fulton County on the Atlanta Beltline, just to name a few of the things. And many of you know, I helped lead the effort to create the city of South Fulton, working with many people in this room to create the place we are happy to call our city today. And we have a lot more to do there. Three focus areas I'd like to talk about. Quality of life, which of course includes our seniors and continuing legacy there, but our average age in this district is thirty-five. We have also got to provide the right projects, right entertainment for our children, right engagement for our children as we go forward, and support our single parents as well, and our rising families. The second area is infrastructure. We have to think about the future and what that looks like. I know all of you are tired of being in traffic. And if you want to go anywhere, you've got to be stuck in traffic. You've got to figure out how we do that and make sure we have the right support there here. And Representative Bruce touched on economic development. I'm really glad to hear what he's talking about, and I really encourage you to follow up on that. Because I'm a graduate of Leadership Atlanta, and they are coming for this district. Because we have the resources everyone else wants. And if you don't think they're coming, I got a surprise for you. You have to choose the right person to be at the table, or we will continue to be on the menu. Thank you, Rafer Johnson, for your consideration.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much Pastor Martin and Councilman Baker for inviting us to come out here this morning. I'm Dr. Sonia Frances Rowe. I am a native of Barbados by way of Massachusetts where I grew up. I lived in many other states in the Midwest. I came to Georgia in 1998. Jump right in. I am so proud to be a part of our community where I live. So, when I came to Georgia, I decided I wanted to stay involved in the community. And my husband, Dr. Gordon Rowe, who is a teacher at Annika High School, told me about education. I'm educated by profession, anyway. So, we jumped in and we tried to get involved in different things in our community. With that, I decided to go. We were part of the Citizens University. We joined and went participating in the Sheriff Academy. We participated in the court watch. We participated in the, trying to think now. There were so many others. But anyway, what we did was Gordon and I decided we wanted to make sure we knew what was going on in our community. So, with that, we got to meet all of the department heads that participated in Fulton County, and we got-
...to make sure the right choices are made. And we make the right choice the first time, so we don't have to continue to go back and waste more money and more time to redo decisions that we didn't think through the first time.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. How's it going?
Good morning.
Y'all okay? Okay, good? Well, thank you, Councilman Baker. Thank you, Pastor Martin. My name is Sojourner Maribel Grimmet. And yes, I was named after Sojourner, true. But here's a fun fact. My middle name is Ruth. I'm glad to be here. I'm glad to see all of you. Just a little bit about my background. I am committed to people and services, and I'm a connector. And I've been doing that for over twenty years in Fulton County. I currently work for National Church Residences, which is an affordable housing developer. And we serve over twelve hundred seniors every day in eight communities here in metro Atlanta. Prior to working for National Church Residences, I worked for Fulton County Government. I served for four and a half years. I was the director of constituent services. So, I would listen to concerns and I would find answers for constituents. I also worked in public relations for the county as well. And as I mentioned earlier, I'm passionate about people and services and making sure that I'm also a good listener. So, listening to people that are concerned. So, I appreciate Representative Bruce this morning, you know, turning the table and listening to your concerns. And that's what I've done for the county. So, I've lived here again in South Fulton for fifteen years. I went to undergrad at Clark Atlanta University. Do we have any Mighty Panthers in the house? That's right. I went to Clark Atlanta for undergrad, then I went to Penn State for grad school, and then I came back for love after serving as an AmeriCorps member in DC. I married my college sweetheart, Roland, and we have two young boys who are twelve and almost ten years old, Roland and Joshua. I'd love for you to learn more about me and my platform and what I'm passionate about. I'm passionate about crime and safety. I'm raising two black boys in this community, and I see heads shaking, right? So, we need to wrap our arms around our young black men. I'm also a student of economic development. Learn more at electsojourner.com. Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Carl Dorsey. I'm a native of Atlanta, Georgia, by way of southwest Atlanta. I attended Thayer High School. I now live and am a proud member of the new city of South Fulton. I am from a long line of Baptist ministers. My great-grandfather, Reverend J.D. Dorsey, my grandfather, Reverend E.H. Dorsey, and my father, Reverend Carl Dorsey, senior. My mother is Carolyn E. Dorsey, retired chemist. And my aunts, George Dorsey, Dr. George Dorsey from Fattah, and Hady B. Dorsey. So, I come from a long line of committed community activists. I myself am a music producer, DJ. I am a proud member of the most worshipful Prince Hall of Lies by way of Gate City, and I come to serve. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to get a little bit closer to you.
All right.
And as a former judge serving in this community, as a former Fulton County Commissioner, district-wide and county-wide, serving in this community, and as executive director of the state of Georgia's Civil Rights Department, serving this community, and as an attorney, I look around, I think I see a couple of clients' faces, but I'm not going to identify. I'm Gordon Joyner. I am so happy and honored to be here this morning with you, with our moderator, with Pastor Martin, with Mayor Protim Baker, but especially with Chief Meadows, but especially with you. Because I want to discuss with you the needs that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners can assist with, with the new communities of South Fulton. I have with me that $1.1 billion Fulton County Commission budget, because this is the policy statement. I look forward to talking with you about my priority platform piece of building a senior citizens multi-purpose center in District 6. So, you have gotten up this morning to hear us. We respect you for that, and I look forward to discussing the issues with you. I ask you to please take a look at my background statement in your package. I'm a graduate of Morehouse College and Harvard Law School with further study at the University of Abidin in Nigeria and University of Bonn in Germany. But I grew up on a farm on a red dirt road in Fort Valley, Peach County, Georgia. Thank you.
In just two minutes, give a hand, folks. We're about to begin our prepared questions. Candidates will have, unfortunately, just one and a half minute to answer the questions. So, you want to make sure that your answers are short, to the point, and accurate, okay? The first question is, what do you think are the most two pressing issues facing Fulton County, and what will you do to solve them? We'll start with you.
Good morning. We have, we have the pleasantries out the way. There are two pressing issues. Well, there are more than two pressing issues. But the main pressing issue that I want to address right now, city of South Fulton had hiccups when it became city of South Fulton. But it made the six o'clock news. Why? Because, like he said, ninety percent African-American. Other actual municipalities had hiccups as well. Did they leave WSC at 6:00 PM? No, they didn't. But I'm trying to get you all to understand why everyone is looking at the president, okay, and what's going on with that. This race is the most important race, because there are outsiders trying to take control of this seat via us. So, I ask that you understand, yes, there's a lot of pressing issues, but the most important issue is that you vet all of these candidates, because we cannot go and put candidates in another race for another side of town. But guess what? There are some in this one. So, our most pressing issue is to vet these candidates and make sure they are representing us. City of South Fulton is a great place to live. South Fulton County is a great place to live. And guess what? The resources will go down instead of up if you put the wrong person in place. I have these gloves with me for a reason. Because sometimes what you say is not popular, but it's true. And I stand on truth today to let you know Khadijah is a community fighter. Thank you.
Again, the question is, what do you think are the two most pressing issues facing Fulton County, and what will you do to solve them?
Thank you. Well, I don't have any boxing gloves, but the two most pressing issues in Fulton County and South Fulton District 6, I think are the issues with our property tax assessments. Number two is a combination of providing services and more funding south in terms of transportation, better expectations in terms of customer service, as well as the perception of crime, which is something we need to all work on city by city.
Hello, folks, again. I'm Warren Head. The two most pressing issues. First, workforce. Opportunities being brought to you and the residents to make sure that they have adequate means in which to take care of themselves. We're talking about economic possibilities here. The workforce budget is 3.2 billion, excuse me, a million dollars that has been given by the federal government. That money should be used not only for you, but those adults who are not in a position to help themselves. I'm talking about adults thirty to sixty-five years old who either did not go to school or finished school, who need that help. That money needs to be spread between those, and it should not be sent back. The next thing is housing affordability. You don't want housing that is attached to what we would call a land trust, because at that point, you don't own the land. You want to be able to create wealth. And as you know, to create wealth, you need to own everything as far as the property that you own. That is a vital part of being a property owner and creating wealth for yourself, is that first house. So, that kind of thing is crucial. You do not want what is happening.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Good morning, again. I believe the two pressing issues from my perspective are two things. Jail and crime, but I committed from a different perspective. We have a pre-diversion program in, the county put over $1.1 billion into, million dollars into, that we're not properly enforcing. We are overcrowded in our jails. We have inmates sleeping on boats. We are exposed to federal fines as a county, and that will come out of our pockets as citizens. So, we have to tackle that and get that under control. We also have, we really need to, I'm very, I've said this before, I am for legalization and decriminalization of marijuana, because if we do that, we remove a whole bunch of people out of our system and reduce our overpopulation. The other thing that is pressing is economic development. And if you look at that, if we fix economic development just right, we have a couple of assets. In addition to our land that we have here, we have two airports, the two busiest airports, the world's busiest airport and the Fulton County Charlie Brown Airport. With those assets, they want access to this area. Financial tech, they call it fintech. We can put businesses, bring them here instead of going to California, much cheaper, right here on the south side and bring real jobs into our district. So, that's just some of it. But visit raferjohnson.us for more information. Thank you.
We have a second microphone after, yes, that would be for you on the last board.
I don't want to repeat what the others have said, but those are very important issues that they mentioned. Two things that I want to talk about briefly is health as well as senior services. Thirteen years, I just spent taking care of a senior person, my stepdad. It was an eye-opening to the services or the lack thereof services in South Fulton for seniors. Those of you who have parents, they have already taken care of them, you know what I'm talking about. Those of you that have not, your time's coming. And for thirteen years, working with the city of South Fulton, I became good friends with Emma Darnell because I never stopped calling her office, never stopped going, because there were so many services that were needed. The first thing I would do was look in and review the services that are needed for seniors in our community. The other piece I wanted to talk about, I don't know if you all know that, South Fulton has the highest number of AIDS HIV victims here. And they're now comparing South Fulton with Nigeria. We have more AIDS HIV cases here than we have in Nigeria. Look it up and you can figure it out, and they'll tell you. And the reason why I chose those two areas is because to talk about, those are the people that don't have a real big voice. Seniors don't have a voice. Those people who have health issues out there, we need to take care of those people, because when we do that, then we're taking care of a community. Those are very, very important. Those are there near to my, to my heart. And since we're talking about-
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I won't waste any time, but going back, they had a lot of great points. I will say my two issues are definitely seniors and youth. And I have to differ with Dr. Rowe to say that the seniors are hurt. The seniors are the ones who come out to the community meeting. The seniors are the ones who are making sure that they try to get hurt and get things changed. But you need a commissioner who can hear the seniors and make sure that the change will come for them. We have our seniors who are actually living longer. Our seniors are active, and we need to make sure that they have a community that they can go to. I have clients that I travel all over to, and a lot of them don't move to our neighborhood because we don't cater a lot to our services, or we don't have the activities there. The same thing with our youth. And I will say this, one of the most pressing issues for me is to build the bridge between our seniors and our youth. We have to build a bridge to that. And as of right now, our generations have fought for us, and it's time for the youth and the younger people to come behind and continue to fight and understand at the same time, we can't just say, well, you can just live off of everything that we fought for. We have to continue to fight. We have to continue to progress. That is the one thing I want everyone to continue to see. And the last thing with our youth, we can eliminate a lot of our youth going to jail. We have to be proactive with our youth. We have to get them engaged. We have to get them involved. The reason I wasn't in trouble, Mama had me active. From Girl Scouts to church to auxiliaries at school, I was active. We need to get our kids out and active and in the community and engaged. And I will say, as Fulton County Commissioner of District Six, Yoshina Cobra Bradford.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. The issues that I would tackle, um, are more than two, but I'd start with crime and safety. So we're still having our slider crimes. I was a victim of a slider crime, and one of my sorority's daughter was recently a victim. So I look at crime and safety, jurisdictions working together, right? Um, I'd also reinstate the My Brothers Keeper Program. Um, Gordon, you talked about that, um, at our last form. And I was the one that was working with the chairman who implemented that program. So, um, I would start a mentorship program for young black boys. I would reinstate that as Commissioner. And, um, like Rafer said, I believe in second chances as well. I work in affordable housing. I work in affordable senior housing every day. I touch seniors every day, twelve hundred of them, and I know their needs. I know what they need. We need to expand our adult day. We need to expand our adult daycare so we can take care of our seniors because they're living longer. You can tell they're passionate when it comes to this. And also, of course, economic development, we've been talking about this a lot. Economic development and jobs. We have a canvas, a beautiful canvas in which we live in, in South Fulton. We need to make sure that the right developers are coming in here, and we need to make sure that our voices are heard. Gentrification is real, y'all, and we're seeing it in cities across America. And we're seeing grandmas being displaced. We're seeing, um, you know, people losing their homes. So we need to make sure that we have a seat at the table and that, um, economic development is what, the developers who come here-
Your time is up.
We sit with them, and we get what we want. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Um, the first thing on my list would be economic development. I would like to attract and retain quality businesses that we would like to see in our community. Um, with that being said, the businesses will have to reinvest back into our community by providing quality jobs, supporting the workers, and supporting the quality of life by creating jobs and encouraging entrepreneurship. Youth development programs, as well as pre-aggressed programs. Strengthening public safety would be my second. Protection of our homes, protection of home dwellers, travelers, and visitors that's coming in and out of the community.
I agree with everybody. Those are all excellent points. There's no question that quality economic development and services to you, from senior services to services for our youth, are incredibly important in this community. And I wanna look at the other side of the coin, which has to be addressed in order to make all of these other goals work. We have to feel safe. We have to feel safe when we lock our doors at night, when we get up in the morning and leave our homes. Chief Meadows, my pledge is that all of the resources that still exist with the Fulton County Police Department, databases, expertise, scientific criminal investigation knowledge, all of those resources will be emphatically made available to you and your department and all of the other police departments of all the, the other communities of this district. I will always come back to senior citizens because I pledge to you, we are going to build a senior citizens multipurpose center in District Six. That's not just theory.
Your time is up.
I helped build the Darnell Center as a county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Can you give a round of applause? We're gonna start with you, Gordon. We're gonna come in reverse.
All right.
The next question is, there is an issue of resources allocation between your Fulton and South Fulton. How would you ensure that the south side receives its fair share of revenues of resources inside?
That's an excellent question, and that is a question that we all should be concerned about. The equity of distribution of this one point one billion-dollar budget to make sure that in all of the areas that are important to our quality of life are brought to this side of the county, rest in the voice that you place at the table. You have to have a strong and effective and knowledgeable voice who is willing to speak truth to power to make sure we get our resources. If you saw in the Atlanta Journal-Constitution newspaper this week, in the metro section, you saw a newspaper article about me, your future commissioner, speaking truth to power. Because I brought a lawsuit against the state of Georgia in my own name to enforce the Georgia Open Records Act. Because I believe in open, transparent, honest government. And I will bring that strong voice to the table for you to make sure we get our share of resources. That's gordonjoyner.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon, and I agree with you one hundred percent. Uh, I am not prepared for this question, and I will yield.
As far as resources, on my first day, I would, um, I would sit down with the various commissioners to talk about the various resources. From what I've heard just talking to constituents is, um, Old National Highway, we still have sidewalks that need to be, um, completed. Um, FIB, I would talk to the commissioners about that. So on my first day, I would sit down and talk with all of the commissioners and collaborate with them, in addition to having a Mighty Six hotline so constituents can talk to me about their concerns. So that's what I would do, is, um, talk with the other commissioners, collaborate with them, and then communicate to constituents on the updates of what's going on in District Six.